Okay, welcome everyone. This is the Central Regional School Committee. We have an order at 7:00 PM on Tuesdays, Thursday, December 13th. At this point in time, as we note to everyone that we are going to go audio and video recorder, and is there anyone in the audience recording this meeting? Seeing none, we move on. All those who are able, please do ask for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Assistant Director of State Roll.
Dr. Rock, he's going to be here. Mr. DiCaprio?
Mr. DeChamassot?
Here.
Mr. Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Farley?
Mr. Hagmeier?
Here.
Mr. Hicklin?
Here.
Mr. Lacatella?
Here.
Mrs. Latizorn?
Here.
Mr. Lex is not here. Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Amacast?
Here.
We still have an open seat in Washington. Our municipal rep will not be here. Our student rep?
Here.
And our CBA rep?
Great. We have a corner.
We have a corner. And the chair validates that this agenda is valid in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 825 of the UNO. And at this time, will any responses from the audience? Okay, seeing none, and if there's no objection by the committee, we're going to move Attorney Kinzer's presentation up to the beginning of the meeting. It just took some time on social media. Your second ADA with Portia Stone.
All right.
Your second ADA.
For now, yeah. I'll let you know if I get a text while I'm up here. I have been in the DA's office for 22 years. Primary job is prosecuting cases, but over the last 14 years, I've worked with the outreach department, started dealing with bullying in the schools. And as times change, as we know, we've kind of changed our presentation. Over the last two years, I've really focused a lot, even at the middle school level, about social media and technology because it's starting to bleed down to younger and younger kids. I'm proud to say I held off till my son was 13 before I got him a cellphone, despite the fact being told on a daily basis I was the worst dad ever. So I know it's tough. But what we're dealing with, with the onslaught of technology, is the good and the bad. Technology can bring us closer, it can expand education, it can open up avenues and experiences that we didn't have when we were kids. I always joke with my kids in my parent presentations that I used to use Encyclopedia Britannica, and we had the whole set, including the multicolored book section at the end, you know, the how-to books. You guys remember what I'm talking about? That's how I did research. Now my son just Googles stuff, or watches a video on it, and that's how he's learning and getting information. There's more information out there, it's just a different way. But with technology comes how it can be used, and the biggest thing we're dealing with are social media apps. And the minute you figure one out, they've already moved on to something else. The biggest example that's not really about an app that I'll give you is I started to finally figure out how to play Minecraft, but that doesn't matter anymore because my son plays Fortnite, and I don't understand that one yet. So the minute we start to get a hold of what they're doing and get some grasp on what it can do, they move on to something else. And the reality is, is that technology and these apps kind of dominate all parts of our lives, especially for us and young adults. It changes the way that we learn. It changes the way that we have relationships with each other. I'll tell you, my 13-year-old son has had three girlfriends. He's never gone on a single date with them. I know that they're girlfriends because they send messages back and forth that include heart emojis and "we're going to tell people we're dating," but they've never gone on an actual date. So he's like, "Oh, I broke up with my girlfriend, and I want to say..." That's not a girlfriend, Matt, that's just a girl you send text messages to. But that changes the way you have relationships, right? It changes the way we work. Technology is a huge part of our jobs now. It changes the way that we communicate, it changes even the way that we shop and consume our entertainment. My daughter, when we go to the movies, always asks me, "I'm going to go to the bathroom, you pause the movie." I'm like, "No, it doesn't work that way." I think we're in the movies area. But you've got to understand, right? That's her perception of how entertainment is consumed. You can stop even a live television show to go use the bathroom. So those are what we're dealing with when we're talking about technology. And what we have to remember is that technology can start to become the social center of our world. Our kids' social values are starting to be determined, and their social status within school is judged by social media likes or dislikes, or how many people like a post on Instagram, or how many streaks they have going on Snapchat. It starts to become their cultural center. They start to get their identity from online personas, or how they project themselves, or how they see other people. It starts to become the economic center of what we do. I tell my kids, "It's time for your Christmas list," and all I get are a series of text messages of snapshots from Amazon of the stuff that they want me to buy them. So their concept of how they're living is changing, and as an older person, it's hard to kind of keep up. To me, though, the real danger is when it starts to become the moral center. And our kids start to get their values and judgments from what they see online, or how they see other people portraying themselves. You know, people like Kim Kardashian can put out a book called Selfish, which is just a series of selfie photos she took of herself that were already on Instagram, printed out, put in a hardcover book, and you can go on the bestseller list selling hundreds of thousands of copies. And kids start looking at that as being, "Hey, that's how you achieve fame, that's how you achieve success, that's how you're defined as being a popular, successful person." And that's not really where we want our kids to get their moral values from. And against that backdrop is, we're dealing with frankly, kids that don't have fully-formed brains, right? The frontal lobe, where all of these executive functions, the conductor, judgment, impulse control, emotion, reasoning, problem solving, that's not fully developed until a child is 24-years-old. So against that backdrop, we're providing them these devices and apps and platforms that really drive their moral decisions, they drive their cultural decisions, it drives their status, it drives their sense of what's right and wrong, and they don't really have the tools to be able to handle that. So it becomes incumbent upon us to not just trust that phone or device that we put them in front of because it makes them quiet for a little while. Trust me, my son is 13, my daughter is 10, and it's some days when he's downstairs playing a video game in hour seven, and she's in her room taking photo number 19 of herself that she can try to put on Instagram, I'm like, "Oh, that's so great, they're not in here asking me a million questions, or, you know, asking me to do a million things." And that's when I have to snap into it and say, "You've got to get up. You've got to get up, you've got to get involved. You've got to pay attention to what they're doing," because they don't really have the mental acuity to handle a lot of what's coming at them. So it becomes incumbent upon us to understand not only what they're going through, but the role that technology can play in their life. And we can't just give that all up to the device, or give that all up to the app, and hope that by talking to them about doing the right thing, they'll do the right thing. It has to be more than that. There's a generational gap that really exists with us. When you talk to teens and you ask them, or our parents rather, "Are you discussing the expectations about how much time you spend online, or how much time you spend on your cellphone?" 93% of parents say, "Yes, I've done that. I got that locked down. I'm killing it when it comes to that." When you ask teenagers, only 61% of them agree with that assessment. When you ask adults, "Are you informed somewhat, or very informed, about what your teens do online or on their cellphones?" Again, 91% of parents, "Yep, I know, I got it." But when you ask the teens, they're like, "No." It's only about 62% of the degree. When you start to see that gap existing in similar categories, you start to realize that we think we know, we think we understand, we think we got it figured out, but in reality, we probably don't. And it really becomes incumbent upon us to kind of do a little bit more. And I want to talk in a second about what are some of the things that we can do, is not only parents, but adults, educators, because every person in this room, if you have children of your own, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, you're going to come into contact with them in normal, everyday life. But some of us are coaches, some of us are after-school providers, some of us are scout leaders, some of us are den mothers, some of us are babysitters. There's a lot of people that come in contact with our kids, and we all need to be thinking the same way when it comes to technology. When you have that kind of gap, where you think you understand everything that's going on, but in reality you don't, to me, that's why you see in the last 10 years, the incidents of cyberbullying online and through social media platforms have gone from about 18% to 34% in 10 years. Because we don't have a good understanding of what our kids are doing and how they're interacting with it, so we can't have solid conversations with them about it. There was a study that I read when they asked kids who played online video games, you know, if you play Fortnite online, one of the biggest aspects of it is, my son puts those headphones on with the microphone, and he can talk to the other players. He doesn't always know the other players. So he is communicating with other individuals. Some of them may be his age, some of them may be older, some of them may be younger, some of them are using different language, some of them are speaking in different ways. But in the study, they ask kids, "Have you ever been bullied playing online video games?" The number was about 24%. But when you ask them, "Have you ever been harassed, intimidated, made fun of, or stopped playing a game because somebody was teasing you?" That number went almost up threefold to like 62%. So to me, that means there's a disconnect from the kids understanding what's happening to them as actually being bullied, that what you're experiencing is not normal. Because my son would tell me, "Well, that's what happens when you play Fortnite." One of the things that shocked me is he's like, "Yeah, everybody says the N-word when we play Fortnite." And I'm like, "Nobody says that word, buddy. You're not supposed to say that at all." He's like, "No, everybody says it. They call each other that, and everything that happens, that's what they say." So we got a conversation about that, so when he now hears people saying that, or using that kind of language, he gets out of that room and tries to enter a room where that's not happening. Or he shuts off the headphones so he can't hear the person. Or, my favorite, he just plays with people that are his actual friends in real life, right? I'm like, "Why don't you play with Logan? Why don't you play with Brady? Why don't you play with Liam? Those are guys you go to school with and know. Those are people you should be playing with." So we need to do a better job of helping them understand that that's not the normal way that people interact using social media and technology. Some of the things I'd like to point out is that you have certain things that exist from the federal government, and, you know, I think it was Ronald Reagan that said, you know, "Don't worry, the worst thing you hear is, 'Don't worry, we're the federal government, we're here to help.'" To me, it kind of applies to this. When you see something like the Child's Online Privacy Protection Rule, you start to get this warm feeling, "Yes, the government's there, they're helping protect my kids online." The reality is, this only works if kids accurately report their age online, and if you're making sure that that Facebook page that they set up, they're really giving their true age, or that Instagram account, you're not letting them have it till they're 13 because that's what this rule would protect, is anybody who accurately reports their age. A lot of kids join these social media sites like Kick, and they misrepresent their age, so these protections don't really exist for them. So again, don't trust that the app is going to do it, don't trust that the government's going to protect. You've really got to get involved. The biggest example I give is that Facebook, how many of you guys in here use Facebook? I know you all do. You're all people over the age of 35 for the most part, right? They get about a million user violations a day reported to them. A million a day! They have about 12 people that work in their report compliance department. Those people are not evaluating a million user complaints or violations a day. A lot of things go unchecked, a lot of things exist out there, and you think, "Well, it's Facebook, right? Facebook's on TV, Facebook is, everybody has it." Nothing bad's on there. One of the most recent cases I did about child exploitation is undercover officers going into Facebook chat rooms that were titled "Young Girls Looking for Older Guys." They just exist on Facebook. And one of my first questions was, "How does that chat room even exist? Why would..." They don't have enough people to monitor that and shut that down. And the minute they do, they change it to "Young Ladies Looking for Older Men." You know, they're always one step ahead of what's happening. So be aware, because to our young adults, even kids in middle school, when they get involved in using social media, the danger is, danger to their reputation, all right? That's what I call it. Because it's going to affect college admissions, believe it or not. It's going to affect their ability to get employment. It's going to affect their interactions with law enforcement, because some of the things we're talking about are crimes. Some jurisdictions take very aggressive approaches to crimes like this. And what I'm talking about is young adults who may take nude or semi-nude photos of themselves and share them with each other, thinking that's what 14-year-old boys and girls do to like each other. That's actually, in our Commonwealth, the creation, dissemination, and possession of child pornography. And there's no exception because you're that age, and there's no exception because your boyfriend and girlfriend really love each other. A lot of other jurisdictions in this state, and a lot of other jurisdictions in this country, choose to prosecute kids who do things like that. I've worked very hard over the last 12 years to not do that, because I don't know that that's where we want to go in a lot of these circumstances. But that means we've got to do more about education. And finally, your reputation with your family and friends is going to be damaged when you get involved in this kind of stuff. So I always talk to parents, I talk to educators, I talk to anybody that works with kids. There's three focuses: communication, boundaries, and monitoring. Those are the things you want to focus on when it comes to kids using technology and kids using social media platforms. Communication means embracing their world, all right? I still don't understand Fortnite, but I sit there and I listen to him describe it, and I watch him do things that I can't even keep up with, and he talks to me about it endlessly. But I'm trying to embrace his world, I'm trying to understand it. And I wouldn't know about people using that N-word that I talked about before unless I was having that conversation with him and making myself available to him. And that's what we need to do. You have to have an ongoing dialogue and active involvement throughout their youth. I always reference when my parents taught me how to drive. I grew up in the South. When I was old enough to drive, we lived in Florida, so I used to drive around the neighborhood with my mom. She would do a lot of holding on to the thing and putting the fake brake on while we were driving. My dad would take me to the Piggly Wiggly parking lot, teach me how to parallel park. He was very obsessed with that. I'm a very good parallel parker. And I used to think, "This is stupid. How's this helping me?" And as I look back, I realize that it wasn't the physical things we were doing with the car. It was all those conversations my parents were having with me. They're like, "I know that you know how to drive, and I know that you have responsibility for this car because of how much it means to the family, but also you have responsibility to all the people in the car. And you have to be aware of the people out there who may not be paying attention like you are, who may not be as safe as you are, who may be out there doing dangerous things." It was those conversations they were having, it was really, it sunk in. Because driving isn't just about taking care of yourself, it's about being responsible to everything around you and paying attention to all those other people out there. So start having those conversations at a young age with your kids about using social media. Social media's great, you want an Instagram account, that's great, but I've got to be your friend on Instagram. I've got to see everything you post. If somebody writes something on your page, you have to be willing to come and talk to me about it. And even though it's embarrassing, I tell the story about my daughter used something that used to be called Musically, it's now referred to as TikTok. It's one of the apps that kids use. They make little short lip sync videos that can speed up and slow down the sound, and it's annoying because it's the same like 10-second loop of music over and over and over again. The first time she was using Musically, she had posted a video of herself singing, and somebody had commented on it and said, "Really great, honey, would you do one without your shirt?" She came and showed me that. And that is what we had talked about. We had talked about, "There's people out there that may say or do inappropriate things, and you've got to come and tell me." And she did that. So I told her, "Hey, this is what we're going to do. We block that person, I contacted Musically, I reported them, I stayed on it through their customer service until I got the people I needed to." And then I talked to her about how proud of her I was that she came to me and told me that. Now, I imagine how my dad would have reacted if I had said something like that to him when I was young. He would have said, "Great, phone's gone, done, problem solved." That's not necessarily the relationship we want to build with our kids. We want them to trust us, and we want them to come to us when issues arise. That starts with having that ongoing dialogue and communication with them, being involved in what they do. So I asked you about Facebook. Fastest-growing group on Facebook is adults over the age of 35, and I say to you, "Congratulations, you have killed Facebook with kids. They don't use Facebook anymore, right? They use this one." You know Snapchat? They use this one, Instagram, right? They migrate to the newest thing, they migrate away from wherever we are. So I encourage you, get Snapchat, get Instagram, get involved, get all over their pages, they'll move on to something else. But my point is, the minute you get a hold of what they're doing, and you get a handle on understanding it, they've moved on to something else. So the next level that I wanted to talk about was boundaries and setting the boundaries for our kids. It is probably the most difficult one. It is being clear, being firm, making sure that they're communicated very well, and that those boundaries are respected. My parents had no problems when I went to sleepovers, calling up the mom that I was going to the house of and saying, "Robbie doesn't get to stay up past midnight, he can't have soda after..." That's where they called me, Robbie. "Can't have soda after 10:00, and he's not allowed to eat cheese. He'll tell you he wants to eat cheese, but don't give him cheese." She would say that. And it was embarrassing, but it was important. Are you doing that when your kids go over? Are you saying, "Listen, I don't allow my kids to use Snapchat, or I don't allow them to use their phone devices after a certain hour, I don't allow them to play certain games." And if you're the other parent on the other end, are you listening and respecting that? Because they set boundaries with their kids, and we should be respecting those boundaries when they come into our world as well. So the boundaries I'm talking about. Limit computer and internet access. How often and when they can do it. Trust me, my son tells me, "I gotta, I gotta be, you gotta keep the phone on past 9 o'clock, Dad, because I gotta, I gotta read this, I gotta do that, I gotta keep my streaks going with Liam on Snapchat." Nope, you know the rules, buddy. The phone goes off at 9 o'clock. I use the app on my phone to shut off the internet and shut off his phone, so he can't do anything. It's like a brick. Establish rules for technology use. You know, I said, had that conversation? Sit down and say, "These are what the rules are going to be." I literally encourage you to write them down. Do a contract. This is the deal, all right? You want an Instagram account? No inappropriate photos, no accepting friend requests from people that you haven't met in real life. You have to accept me as a friend. Here's what I promise. On your birthday, I'm not going to put up a picture of you of 2-years-old in a bathtub and, "Whoa, this little tushy, I love my schmoo, happy birthday." I'm not going to get on your case about homework and chores through Instagram. Those are my promises to you. We're going to write them down. If you break a rule, this is what happens, right? If I break a rule, this is what happens. We're going to sign this, and we're going to put it up. Now, there's no argument. I point to this document a lot. My daughter calls me, I'm like, "Hmm, I don't tell you, you signed it. Should have talked to a lawyer." I don't tell you. But it, she, it works. It works, because she knows what the rules are. Know your school policies. Every school should have a policy about devices at the school, access at the school, what you can and can't do with it, what can happen if you violate those rules. You should know what those are, because sometimes those rules mean we can take your phone for a period of time, and even you as the mom or dad can't get it back. Be aware of access outside the home. You can't hardly go anywhere, whether it's McDonald's, the library, Panera, everybody's got free Wi-Fi. There it goes. I don't know what happened. Nothing.
Did he just go to sleep?
It might have.
Oh, come on. Heart could be battery.
Give me less than one minute.
Did you break the rules and somebody turned off the action?
He may have figured out the code and shut me off.
Revenge.
This one behind the projector.
All the way around? I'll go. So as I was saying, we were talking about having those boundaries and setting those rules and establishing them, and make sure that you communicate them well with your kids. The last area I wanted to talk about was monitoring. That one is a personal choice, but I suggest that you have some level of monitoring, because as much as I want to trust my 13-year-old son, he's not always straight with me. Whether it's about homework, or what he did to his sister, or whether he brought the trashcans in. I talked to him on the phone the other day, I was in the car, and I'm like, "You bring the trashcans in?" He said, "Yep." I go, "I'm going to be home soon, you bring them in." He said, "Yep." And then I started beeping the horn, and he came to the window, and I'm like, "Here's the trashcan, man. It's literally here." "Oh, I was going to get it right when I got the phone, you..." I want to trust him, but I need to verify. So I sometimes go through his phone, I read his text messages, I read the things that he posts on Instagram. That's how I found out for a while, he was the page master of the St. Agnes Memes page that was up on Instagram, where they would put up memes and write things about school or homework or whatever. That's also how I found out about a girl that told him about a year ago that she didn't have to worry about, or he didn't have to worry about her anymore because she wasn't going to be around. He didn't want to go out with her, he only wanted to be friends, so she was going to, she was going to hurt herself. And she sent a picture of her in a hospital bed. Now, I saw that, so I started asking him about it. And he breaks down and he's just telling me, "Yeah, I know." And I'm like, "Buddy, what do you, why didn't you tell me this?" He's like, "Because I don't think she would do it." And I go, "Anytime somebody hurts themselves, the first thing everybody says is, 'I didn't think they would do it.'" And what was so sad to me was in there, he goes, "You have to promise me," he texted her, "That if I go to the movies with you and let you hold my hand, that you won't hurt yourself." And I'm like, "Listen, buddy, you're 12. This is not something you need to handle or deal with. What you need to do is send her a message and say, 'My mom and dad are going to call your mom about the messages you sent me. I'm sorry they saw them.'" Because that's what we did. And that was a difficult conversation, but she appreciated us reaching out to her, and they're still friends. And the mom did what she needed to do to get that young lady help, but if I'm not monitoring and paying attention, he's going to try to deal with these issues and things that come up himself. Especially because he feels like I'm old enough to do it, I'm 13, I can do anything, right? I can do all of this. But whatever level of monitoring you want to do, whether it is going through every message that they have, whether it is periodically checking their phones, whether it is conversating with them on a regular basis about what they're doing or what's going on in their lives, if you have a teenage girl, maybe they'll talk about it. My son just goes, "Nothing, fine, everything's great. What happened at school? Nothing. Did you have a big test? Oh, yeah." So it's not a lot of great conversating, so I do a lot of looking. I used to work with a state trooper that, he had everything you could imagine. He used to get updates on his phone. The minute his kid turned on a phone or hit a key, he would get a report about it. That's the level he felt he needed to have with his kid. But that's a personal choice, I just encourage you have some level of monitoring of what they're doing. So I really feel that if you focus on communication, boundaries, and monitoring, it gives you the best opportunity to help your kids navigate social media, to help them understand the responsibility that comes with using social media, because the consequences can be real. When I talk to high school kids, I bring up a woman, or a young lady named Paige Schumacher. She was a freshman at Kansas State University, pre-med. She posted on Snapchat a picture of herself with a mud mask and said, and put up what she felt were gang signs, and captioned it, "It finally feels good to be an N-word." And she sent it to just her friends. And one of her friends was offended by it and sent it to other people. And it went, as things like this do, viral. And if you go look up Paige Schumacher, you'll find out that after that went viral, Kansas State University kicked her out. And if you Google her name, this is the story that you find. So when you start to go back to what I talked about, your reputation being damaged, she lost an educational opportunity. She now has her reputation damaged because what do we do when we meet somebody? We Google and we look them up online, see what we can find out about them. And it's helping kids understand that there's a whole world out there that has access to this information, and how you portray yourself is gonna follow you. Long after you leave Dalton, long after you leave these elementary and high schools and go out into the world, what you do online is really gonna be that digital footprint that follows you. I hope I hit the topics that you wanted me to talk about. I really appreciate you letting me come in and do this tonight. I'm sorry that it kinda shut down at the last minute, but if you guys have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer them. If you want to ask me anything later, you can always call the DA's office and ask for me and I'll do anything I can to help. So, thank you so much. Good luck this year. All right?
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay. Time to the next order of business with Student Affairs, Hannah McLeod.
All right. So, we have one month left, less than a month now, about a week left of school. Wocona students have been very busy. The sophomore class of 2021 has been sponsoring Toys for Tots Drive, which will end this Friday, tomorrow. It's been a great way for students from all grades to come together and work towards a great cause. This past Saturday on the eighth was Dalton's Light of the Holidays, where both Wocona's chorus as well as the band performed. And some of the art students have their work displayed as well. Coming up tomorrow here at Crainville, Wocona's National Honor Society is hosting the sitting night, which is money for birthday wishes, which is the state's adopted charity this year. And also coming up on Wednesday, the nineteenth, is Wocona's Winter Concert, where the chorus and band will perform at seven in Wocona's auditorium.
Any questions for you? Okay, we're done.
Can I, can I just, um, the Toys for Tots, where would you grab something off for that? Just in the main office, do you think? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, would a member please make a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of November fifteen, twenty eighteen?
I'll make the motion, but before I do, if you look at page fifty-nine, the motion at the bottom, says Dylan makes the motion and seconded. I'd like to correct that, meaning the I that made the motion was seconded by Letizori. Are there any other quick corrections? Anybody else note? I move to approve the minutes, the corrected minutes of the regular meeting of November fifteen, twenty eighteen, as corrected.
Motion in a second to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of November fifteen, as corrected, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, the motion carries. And would a member please, on special warrants?
Move to approve warrant number PR twenty nineteen dash ten dated November thirtieth, twenty-eighth, and counts payable to the amount of seven hundred and twenty thousand three hundred thirteen dollars and sixty cents.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number AP twenty nineteen dash ten, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR twenty nineteen dash eleven dated November twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen, payroll in the amount of six hundred twenty-nine thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars and sixty-four cents.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR twenty nineteen dash eleven, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Want a extension, motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR twenty nineteen dash eleven D dated November twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen, counts payable in the amount of three hundred eleven thousand eight hundred forty dollars and eighty-three cents.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR twenty nineteen dash eleven Delta, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number AP twenty nineteen dash eleven dated November, sorry, December fourteenth, twenty eighteen, counts payable in the amount of four hundred twenty-four thousand thirty-nine dollars and two cents.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number AP twenty nineteen dash eleven, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR twenty nineteen dash twelve dated December thirteenth, twenty eighteen, payroll in the amount of six hundred fifteen thousand five hundred forty-two dollars and forty-seven cents.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR twenty nineteen dash twelve, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Want a extension, motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR twenty nineteen dash twelve D dated December thirteenth, twenty eighteen, counts payable in the amount of one hundred eleven thousand two hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-two cents.
We have a motion in a second for warrant number PR twenty nineteen dash twelve Delta, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. Okay, we have several just slash donations coming up, would a member please make the motions?
First is, be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the grant of two thousand six hundred two dollars from the New England Dairy Council for expansion of breakfast services at Kittredge Elementary School, as recommended by the district treasurer.
We have a motion in a second for acceptance of the New England Dairy Council grant, is there any discussion?
So, I asked you question about embracing world culture. How does that apply?
We're on that. That's the next, the next one section.
Oh. I'll wait till you finish.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? The motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the following grants totaling seven thousand four hundred seven dollars and twenty-nine cents from the Seven Towns Education Enrichment Program, a fund of Berkshire Taconic Community Foundation, as recommended by the district treasurer.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for acceptance of the Seven Towns Educational Enrichment Program grant, is there any discussion?
No.
Yes, this is coordinated through Charlie Bradshaw, and he brings a cultural group to the other schools in the district to make a point for the kids, diversity.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Just real quick, the last grant, he was too modest to say anything, but Mr. Peters was really in pettus for us actually receiving the last grant, based on information he got over a year ago at MAS SMSC, so it came to fruition, so that's a really positive outcome of the conference.
Great. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of accepting the Seven Towns Educational Enrichment Program grant, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the following grants totaling eight thousand one hundred dollars from the Central Berkshire Taconic Community Foundation, as recommended by the district treasurer.
We have a motion in a second for acceptance of the Berkshire Taconic Community Foundation grant, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the grant of one thousand dollars to unified sports program from Special Olympics, as recommended by the district treasurer.
We have a motion in a second for acceptance of the Special Olympics Inc. grant, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the donation of nine hundred dollars to the Kittredge Gift Account from O'Connor Studios for Portraitsures at Kittredge, as recommended by the district treasurer.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for acceptance of a donation from O'Connor Studios, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Okay, the motion carries. Next order of business, another report of the chair, we still have a town of Washington School Committee vacancy, and it's been, that's almost two years now. We're still hoping to find someone to fill that seat that has two years left on it. And Assistant District Attorney Kinzer already provided the social media presentation, and we thank him. So, the next step for business is the subcommittee reports and recommendations. And we're gonna go a little bit out of order tonight, I think we wanna have Dylan go first, and then we're gonna jump to the Wocona Building Project. We have two ops, and then we're gonna give some presentation for that tonight. So, who's ever standing in for Barbara?
I'm living.
Okay?
Okay. So, the people of the subcommittee, we have our December sixth. They got that meeting, we had an analysis of the NESCAS status, this is a continuation on our last meeting. Leslie presented, they described to us the process of full payment grant, to which we are entitled due to our return on status. We also have a literacy grant and PES, PBIS grant, both of which will assist NESCAS students. Leslie identified the four pillars associated with return on classes, they include leadership, shared responsibility, and collaboration, with a focus on school private literacy and data analysis, intentional practices that are rehearsed and consistent, and student-specific support and school climate and culture through PBIS and SCLD. Students will be given benchmark tests, the first one was in October, and the next one will be during February break. UDLA implementation will be provided with student supports. EWIS will be used to identify students at risk in terms of non-academic concerns, and the data will be reviewed by the school psychologists and the student adjustment counselors. We had a concern about the test scores at NESCAS, and it was confirmed that they have continually dropped in the last few years, and there is a sense of urgency to try to improve those scores. Leslie indicated they will continue to provide us with data relative to the work at NESCAS. We also had a review of the Eureka Math Program, which has been formed, a committee through the school, has been formed to explore use of Eureka Math, which is a program that aligns to standards for the rigorous problem solving component. Leslie gave us the curriculum adoption guidelines, that included both Central Berkshire Regional School District policy information, as well as projected timeline for potential adoption, and also included feedback from districts that currently use Eureka Math, which are Groton, Demstable, and Westboro, and Birmingham. And then we talked about two field trips. So, the two field trips that are in your package, the first is an overnight trip for the Wocona cheer team, and it do have a change to the proposal that we voted on, based on a change in the itinerary. So, just bear with me, we'll get that. So, that was changed slightly because the cheer team was going to be staying at Disney, right on the property. And just recently, they were informed that their reservation was canceled. And so, I asked for clarification on that, so I'll give you the simplified version. What prevented the cheer team from being able to stay at Disney as a team, the rooms are booked on a first come, first served basis. Massachusetts qualifies in mid-November, where most states qualify in October. By the time Central Berkshire qualifies and enters, most of the rooms are typically full, and this year, as they were this year. There are a few places that qualify in December, and they are unable, unable to get on the property. There are teams that register before they qualify, and because they do, they take spots that normally would be available. So, the cheer team, team supervisors, the teachers that are involved, arranged to rent a room, a house, sorry, in Solterra Resort in Devonport, Florida, which is a fourteen-bedroom, eleven-bath home located thirty minutes from Disney. Their plan is to have the five adults, all the teachers, room in the first five, first-floor bedrooms, and have the nineteen cheerleaders stay in the bedrooms on the second floor. They also have five parent chaperones that will be staying outside, but who will be coming each day to help feed the team and chaperones while they're at Disney. Since the home comes equipped with a kitchen, they will also have the parents buy food and cook it, so they can eat on Wednesday night when they land in Orlando, and for the three meals on Thursday. And then they'll purchase meal vouchers to use on Friday at the parks. So, basically, the alterations to the travel plans, they've rented a house, they have a quote from the transportation company that will provide transportation to and from the resort. And they indicated that they will save approximately a hundred and fifty dollars per person with this arrangement. The communication indicates that administration Lori, Erin, Jared, and Melissa all support us. So, we would like to recommend that the full committee approve the field trip. And I'll read the motion. They're listening. Okay. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approve an overnight field trip for the Wocona, oh, sorry, I'm doing the other warrant first. Be it resolved, the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approve an overnight field trip for the Wocona French and Spanish students to approach.
No, you were on the right one.
I was on the right one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Let me start again. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire School, Regional School Committee approve an overnight field trip for the Wocona cheerleaders to Orlando, Florida, February sixth to eleventh, two thousand nineteen, as recommended by the curriculum self-committee.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion in a second for approval of the overnight field trip for the Wocona cheerleaders to Orlando, Florida, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? The motion carries.
I just want to introduce our very talented head cheerleading coach, Nikki Damassimo, who has brought this forward a couple of years now to us, and then found there, who's ready to support in one of many roles, but this one is a parent, so thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Nikki, is there, I don't want to put you on the spot, but is there anything that we can do to help prevent this from happening next time? And is it supposed to be?
It really, like, like she said, it was just first come, first served, so a lot of teams qualified back in October, and there are nine hundred teams that go, so that's a big chunk of
Okay.
the rooms that got booked up, so.
One of the comments that was made in the email was that it goes alphabetically, so I'm wondering if you could register under Central Berkshire as opposed to Wocona, and it would be C as opposed to W.
There you go. I do find it interesting that you're saving a hundred and fifty dollars per person doing this, that's.
Just as someone who's gonna be chaperoning the trip, I think it's much easier to chaperon in a house situation than it is at the hotels anyway, so I think the team will be more focused in this environment. And if they're a little loud and having some fun, we're not disturbing anybody, so I, I think overall it, it might turn out to be a better situation than being in the, in the parks themselves.
Self-inflicted, yeah.
Okay. Another motion, and that is for an overnight field trip for the Wocona French and Spanish students to approach Dejure, Provence, and Barcelona. This was a trip that was previously approved by Vince Gorman. Be it resolved, the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approve an overnight field trip for the Wocona French and Spanish students to approach Dejure, Provence, and Barcelona, April tenth through eighteen, twenty twenty.
Yes, next spring is twenty twenty.
Not this spring.
Isn't it for next spring, huh? It's for next spring, it's twenty twenty. A year, right?
It's not supposed to be.
It's supposed to be this spring, it's twenty twenty. Are you asking me if next spring is twenty twenty? I mean, I'm sorry, funny. It is funny, I know it's crazy, it is.
It was originally scheduled for twenty nineteen.
Yes. It was twenty twenty. Okay, thank you. I thought it was a typo.
Better off for spring.
As recommended by the curriculum self-committee.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of an overnight field trip for the Wocona cheerleaders. I'm sorry. French and Spanish students to approach Dejure, Provence, and Barcelona. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. Is that it for the person?
Let me just check, our, oh, I'm sorry, our next meeting is scheduled for PBS, what the agenda item, and our meeting will take place on January tenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Wocona Building Project next, and we'll start the, the motion to go into executive session. So, a member, please make the motion.
Be it resolved, the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee goes into executive session at seven forty-nine PM in accordance with MGL Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A four, to discuss strategies with respect to security, for which the chair declared an executive session is necessary to protect the bargaining position of the committee, and to reconvene in open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to go into executive session, and we'll reconvene in open session. Would the superintendent please take a bold call vote?
Mr. DeFazio?
Uh, aye.
Mr. Chantel?
Aye.
Mr. Emerson?
Aye.
Mr. Hinckley?
Aye.
Mr. Lucky Tattle?
Aye.
Mrs. Letizori?
Aye.
Mr. Peter?
Yes.
Mrs. Sucker?
Aye.
Mr. Agner?
Aye.
Mr. Amorcas?
Aye.
We're in executive session.
Okay, we'll take a brief pause. Okay, we now reconvene in open session, and we'll move on to finance subcommittee.
That will be it. The finance committee has not met since our last session. Our next meeting is December eighteenth at six PM at the central office, and we will start preliminary discussion on the fiscal twenty twenty budget.
Thank you. And now, policies?
The Policy Committee met on December 4th to review the district bylaws as they relate to the standing subcommittees and the request to add a new subcommittee to focus on student and staff safety, environmental impacts on student and staff comfort, and social, emotional environment of our schools. Our plan at this point is to eliminate the Technology Subcommittee while placing the Technology Subcommittee charter duties within other established subcommittees. The committee then decided upon a name for the new subcommittee and developed the charter duties for that committee. So here's what's going on. The Technology Subcommittee is proposed to be dissolved, and their charters will be placed in the following subcommittees. So their responsibility to review district technology, infrastructure, and human resources needs, and make recommendations to the school committee for improvements and upgrades will move to the Finance Subcommittee. The responsibility to review and update as necessary the acceptable youth policy will move to the Policy Subcommittee, and to annually review the district technology plan to ensure the technology infrastructure supports educational programs and curriculum needs, and administrative and financial needs, make recommendations to the school committee for improvements or upgrades to satisfy such needs will move to the Curriculum Subcommittee. And so kind of dissolve that and reestablish those charters. And then the second phase is the creation of the new subcommittee, which ties in nicely to tonight's meeting, is the Safety and Wellness Committee. And that's the name we've kind of, we've come up with for this new committee. The committee charter is as follows. We will review and make recommendations to the school committee as it relates to student and staff safety and security. Review and make recommendations to the school committee as it relates to environmental impacts on student learning and on student and staff comfort. And review and make recommendations to the school committee as it relates to the social, emotional learning environment. So should I read the motion? Okay. Be it resolved, the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approved the first reading revisions to the district bylaws, Article 4, as recommended by the Policy Subcommittee.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the first reading revision to district bylaws, Article 4. So I just, for the new members, what happens is when we have a change to a policy and bylaws fall under the policy, we have two reads. So that means that tonight, we have the first reading. What can sometimes happen is you might have some modifications to it that would be incorporated in the second reading, and then after the second reading, if it's affirmative, it comes back as adopted. So we got to get that passed tonight first, and then at the first meeting in January, which I think is the 10th, we can vote to on the second reading, which then we adopt the policy. So is there any discussion on this change, on this proposal for policy?
Yes, I had a couple of questions. Under Finance, list of duties for Finance, I don't see anything under there for all that.
That's out, that's out of the scope of this question. Yeah, that would have to go back to policy to discuss the oversight for Finance. So if you want to, you want to make a suggestion to change that?
Yeah.
Then bring it up with Mike Dagway, and we can add it later date.
And I would have a second one with the personnel discussing. The personnel, personnel, what about the health insurance? It's listing what they're doing, and there's nothing listed here about the health insurance. And obviously, if we look at the mega recommendation to change the mix on how the health insurance is paid, it has to come from some part of them.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Thanks, Rick. We got to bring it up outside of the scope of this.
Okay. And the last one, at least, I was in charge, right? John contacted me to give a report of technology, and he asked me to say, please don't close it down.
At the last meeting, he was in favor of closing it down.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand. And I, and to that side of what I'd say is that I think the Technology Committee, the meetings never really, because that was, I mean, if there was really a meeting and people went to it, it might be so meaningful to conduct.
But that's not going the way it's distributed to others.
Yeah.
And I thought the main play of the reason that we were discussing and dissolving the Technology Subcommittee was that we basically brought every, all of our technology up to the speed of where we wanted it to be, and now we're.
Well, for now.
And maintaining it, and maintaining it, so Beckett.
Thanks, Rick. Is there any more discussion?
No.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving the first reading revision to policy, district bylaws, Article 4, if you're by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? If the motion carries. Anything else?
I think that's it, we don't. Do we have a meeting?
I think so.
I don't think so. You were talking about early January, but I don't think.
You didn't schedule it till yet.
Didn't get, didn't get scheduled. You could talk about.
I did.
We're still going to hold on to the current, to the current makeup of the committees. I think maybe Rob and Todd and Mike Hinckley, Fleming, know where you think they might want to go, and at least we can get you temporarily placed, but then I want to come back and just ask people again. Especially with this, it would change, it would probably change the chair of that, that committee. At this point, I want to keep current chairs of existing committees, but this would open up that slot. Personnel?
I would like to report in executive session. We can do that at any time if we want to put in other businesses on it that's part of the meeting.
You're with me again, we're almost through. Was there any technology at that meeting?
There was a meeting.
There was. Yeah, that's right.
And meeting on the 3rd of December. John, by the way, sent his apologies to his car or something, you know. He was not able to make it.
I got the message.
Oh, you did, okay. The IT shared services was one of the conversations at that meeting, and that was specifically with Adam Cheshire and the use of Mr. White and Mr. Sturges. And John seems to be quite concerned over the 60-hour four weeks of work in the industry. And plans for Adam Cheshire to hire a part-time tech who will be supervised by Mr. White sometime next year. The 2019 preliminary IT budget was discussed in the meeting. Mr. White presented the preliminary budget. We are currently at our technology goal that we are working towards for the past many years. Money for new hardware is being reallocated to maintenance and old hardware replacement. And in the updates, we talked about the E-Rate and Power School. File preliminary estimates for E-Rate, 54% of the investment is paid by E-Rate. We are getting two new Power School modules for student representation, and the current issues in technology integration. Mr. White would like to see more training of teachers. And that was it. And then he said date topics for the next meeting, which how to put teachers get classroom software, the next subject, budget update, if the budget is used before, and then a proposal is put this kind of technology, which probably is already done.
All right, thanks, Rick.
Sure.
All right, the next order of business is Wocona Building Project. We already had the executive session. There was a meeting tonight, and most of it was updates. There was the presentation on technology that, in the working group meeting, took about the whole meeting, and it was, it was too much. But I think they greatly shortened it, thanks to Carl, in this School Building Committee, and so, but it was still, you know, it was a lottery list of things that go on. Most of it sounded pretty reasonable to me, in terms of well, the measures they have, the safeguards, and technologies, so I, we'll see how that, how that formulates as it goes forward. The other big, big part of tonight's meeting was, so we've had the Green Committee coming to a lot of the meetings lately, they were pushing to have zero energy, and our architect in Polk M estimated that that would add another $8 million to the price tag, and that would include a geothermal field, but most, the biggest part of the expense was the TV panels. They would be all over the roof of Wocona, and they would be over the two parking lots. It would be kind of a canopy parking lot with portable tables. I think at the end of the day, we had a vote on the geothermal system, which kind of makes you net zero ready, so if the district at any point in the future wants to add portable tables, you can. Rich made a good point that, well, even if you don't do that, you can still buy clean energy through other sources, which would make you net zero. So that was one thing that was never brought up to us before, so on the night he brought that up, it was a good observation, because we can kind of get into it, be net zero, and not have full expense on the front. So I think that it leaves the district with options in the future, but that vote did pass to go to the geothermal system, at least use that. And that, that gets us carbon free in terms of the energy consumption in the building. It basically, as Carl explained it, that makes you net zero from a building perspective, and it pushes back the need to, to have clean energy production upstream of the deal. So that vote, that vote was affirmative, it was a 63 sort of pass, so at a minimum, it's going to be a jury geothermal system that's out there that's going to be for middle school, middle school. And that was at a cost of somewhere between $1.27 and $2 million. So I think that was more valuable to the School Building Committee than the whole net zero, but it was, it was a good balance.
Yeah, Melissa did a breakdown of the cost difference, and that I think was eye-opening of the proximity of leads over to geothermal verse, net zero.
That's that. So Superintendent.
Just a little quick. Good for the technology, wanting to do subjects for the next meeting. And maybe you should share one of those things to address and put it in the next meetings for the appropriate other subcommittees. I don't know if we took appropriate notes, whatever, but you did say that there's some of the activities, you're going to go to a different subcommittee. So whatever the next topic out there, I'm assuming they're important, but they should go to the appropriate committee. Could you bring it up technically? Melissa, you got it?
What?
During that meeting, I did say that, you know, the budgets, the initial budget will be, preliminary budget will be presented to Finance on December 18th, and that all will be welcome to go there.
So the budget was taken care of.
The budget was taken care of.
What was the other one?
The other one was how the teachers get classroom software.
It would be curriculum. I'm sure we could have done that curriculum. Like, Ureka has a platform. A lot of the curriculums that we have has an online platform already, not necessarily anything we upload onto a computer, but it's accessible by the teachers. Whereas, definitely, I'm talking about.
That's what I suppose would be this grant.
Obviously. What committee were you with that one? Sorry. All right, so next order of business is Superintendent's reports and recommendations.
So a lot of my report was accessible via remotely, via the, via online resources. So the Superintendent's memo, check that out, that's a very technical update. We do do a quarterly newsletter, which is more interest-based, and this is more technical, people who are coming and going, professional development, things of that nature, what you would need to know, kind of, as opposed to the newsletter. That was based on feedback I got when I did a survey this past September. The, I think the highlight of my report is I did just get back from Harvard, from, with Leslie Blake Davis and Patty Robey. We went to the instructional rounds training there. I've been to that years ago when I worked in a previous district, and it was phenomenal, so I really wanted them to have that experience. Instructional rounds are based off of a medical, a medical model of rounds, and it's, it's really a high-leverage practice to look at not just teaching, but the impact teaching has on learning, and, and that's kind of our goal. So there's some information about it. Our plan, we had to come up with a plan of where we're going to create our network of rounds. Our plan is to have our first round network at Wocona this year. We think that's the school, the school that's based for it right now, based on all the different things schools have going on. And what it would be is we'd have a facilitator of the rounds, as well as a variety of different people who would be participating, looking at a problem of practice, and really looking at learning targets in the classroom to see the tasks students are engaged in. So I will definitely give an update when that gets going at Wocona. We are thinking potentially of doing the rounds as well. It would be a rounds between Beckett and Kittredge, so they would actually do it together. So we'd have a round team that would go through Beckett and Kittredge. Right now, I think that that's not part of the key priorities at Craneville and Nescus, but certainly something we want to embed in those buildings in the future, but I do think that Kittredge and Beckett would be a great rounds community between the two, and Wocona has a net limited influence. So it was phenomenal. We were in a lot of schools. We got into several schools in Cambridge. I was at East Boston High School, which was very eye-opening, and these are schools that are effectively using rounds and have seen the impact in their data. So East Boston High School is an example. They were in the third percentile, they're now in the 23rd percentile. That is a significant gain, and they are meeting over 80% of their learning targets. So it was not just schools that say, hey, we do rounds, and we're associated with Harvard, and we like it. They, there are schools that said, we're doing rounds, we're seeing actual impact in our, our data and in how our staff is feeling about them. So it was, it was excellent, and I'm excited to bring that back to us and start, start building it into our culture. So I did, oh, Rich, there's a lovely picture of Rich, my report. Look at that, it's Rich.
Melissa didn't share the picture with her, right?
Oh, yeah, next, Rich, there's a lovely picture.
I'm the photographer.
We talked about the breakfast and the classroom program. So I guess the moral of that story is, if you have ideas, if you have suggestions, please bring them forward. We certainly are happy to dialogue, and, you know, we don't, we don't hear everything, so if you hear something great, please do share it. We thankful to Rich for doing that. I won't talk too much about Nescus' turnaround plan for two reasons. Curriculum spoke about it, and it's still being drafted. So once it is drafted, I know Mr. Hobbs is part of that process, actively part of that process. Once it is drafted, Debbie White and a team from Nescus will show you that plan, and there is a $25,000 grant to look at getting that, that crafted, and then there's a grant next year to implement it, and we will talk about that as we progress. I did hear, and I actually, hot off the presses, I don't know what, what the outcome is going to be, if Mr. Hobbs heard this, but that if you come out of status next year, which is a very real possibility for us, you still get the grant for next year. I think we believed you didn't. So you have to finish your turnaround plan, but you still get the grant. So I was talking to a district that went from like the 10th percentile to the 60th. They still got their implementation grant, because the state wants to make sure you can sustain it. So that was good news to me, that it's not just like, okay, you're out, but now you're on your own. It makes sense. So that's kind of what I had. I do plan to, the rest is logistical, and some dates of the community nights. I was planning, and as long as when I meet with Mr. Lucky Telle, Mr. Amorcas, the agenda looks doable, I would like for Leslie Blake Davis, Patty Robey, and then Colleen Trager, who's a teacher at Beckett Washington in grade five, to give an instructional coaching presentation. So we've talked a lot about coaching, and it's kind of like, a year later, where's it at? Because it was last year at the meeting that you approved that position, so at the, at the January meeting, so. Any questions?
The rounds, it seems like the schools that are having success with these rounds, it seems like almost a cause of failure analysis type piece, where they go into the school and they look at where the problems are, and then they, they come up with ideas, they implement it for approval, right? So when you're in the Boston schools, could you just benchmark some of the things that they improved, say, hey, that's going to work really good at our school? As opposed, you know, you could do the rounds too, but, I mean, you had a shortcut.
Well, one of them, I think, is very real for us. So at East Boston High School, for example, they felt that the teachers were doing all the heavy lifting, so the teachers were kind of working harder than the students, and students were very passive participants, so they weren't getting to those higher levels. So I'm delivering a great show, and you're kind of sitting and receiving it, but you're not actively engaged in your own learning, and they were, that was their problem of practice. So you don't watch what the teacher's doing, because that can be almost like distracting when you're going, this is great. You watch and see what the students are doing, and what are the tasks they're involved in. A school that Leslie and Patty were at in Cambridge looked at tasks on grade level. So you might think a task looks excellent. Mary-Kate McCloskey has an eye for this like nobody else. I think she reads Desi standards at night. And you might think that task looks great, kids are into it, it's engaging, it's interesting, it's universally designed, and, oh, it's not a grade-level standard. So that was one of their problems of practice, so you're looking at the task, and that's something I think we all, we all deal with. Those were two, that was one that I saw, it was.
Well, my point is, you can implement it now, you don't have to wait to do the rounds, right?
right?
We, well, what you would do is you would, that's your theory. You would say, this is what we think our problem of practice is and when you go in and you do rounds, you only script. So I couldn't say like, one of the frustrating things about rounds is, so I might say, Mr. Hope modeled at the board. There's judgment in that statement. I think he modeled, is that what he did? What did he actually do? Mr. Hope drew a diagram on the board. Three students answered questions as opposed to students answered questions or students were engaged. I can't say engaged, that's judgment. I couldn't say students were listening, how do I know? And then we look at, the other piece of it is you can look at, I don't know, at Lakona, 15 classrooms. What patterns did you see? Is that actually presenting or just, do I think it's presenting? Does that make sure, I mean, make sense?
Yeah.
There's a whole book on it too. You could go to Harvard.
Okay, are there any questions for the superintendent? All right, we'll move on to next order of business under personnel. Superintendent has listed a number of changes that have been made in the district personnel to date. Next order of business is old business and we have none, our new business, if there is anything, we have no new business tonight, but if there is anything that you wish to see on our next meeting's agenda for January, time to please let us know. And we typically make that agenda up at least a week prior to the meeting so that the, the package can get out. And under remarks for the good of the committee, does anyone want to make any remarks? Bonnie?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I was driving through Coatesville the other day and saw a billboard advertising an open house for Taconic High School on January 17th from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And I just thought that might be a good opportunity for anyone who hadn't yet seen the new Taconic, especially those of us on this committee that will be voting on eventually the new Lakona building. I intend to go because I didn't see it before, but.
That's a good idea and we'll get that message out to the school building committee.
Especially since.
I've been talking to Jake McInnes to find out if there was a time that at least some people could come through and see the new Taconic, but this will take care of that.
It was on a big billboard and it didn't say, you know, I think it's designed for people who want to be new children.
I'll ask Jacob if it's, if it's open.
I don't think they can say no, it's on a big billboard.
Yep.
It's on a billboard, yes.
So, and I just thought, especially since Truper Canada was talking about the black zone and whatever, get zone in the building, you know, something that we can look at.
Anyone else? Yeah, I only have one thing tonight, other than wishing everyone a happy holiday because we won't see each other again until after the New Year, so I hope you all have a happy and safe holiday period. Latin trip. I got a chance to go on Charlie's famous Latin trip and I've got to tell you, it exceeded my expectations. I was really fearful going in as a chaperone, I've never done anything like that before and you never know what you're going to encounter with a group of 14 to 17-year-olds. But, you know, that, that particular part of it, there were 60 students and they were all extremely well behaved. We had zero problems the whole time and, you know, it was, it was refreshing. You didn't have to worry about, you didn't have to worry about the kids. You know, the bed checks at night, they were all where they were supposed to be, they were really, really getting ready to go to sleep as far as I could tell, but I know, I'm sure the social media came out afterwards to, to return to Kinzer's point. It was, you know, I understand now why Charlie designs it the way he does because by the end of the first day, everybody's worn out. We started at 6:30 in the morning, getting the, going through all the bags and preparing to get the bus loaded, didn't get back until 1:30 in the morning the next day. It was, it was driving down to Providence, stopping at the mall, had some free time at the mall, went to the University of Rhode Island Athletic Facility where the director of athletics there that Charlie knows, Thor Bjorn, showed us around and, you know, we got to see everything, every part of the athletic facility, it was really impressive. After that, it was back to the, it was checking into the hotel, then we went to a Latin Carol celebration. So it was at the Baptist Church on Ground University and there wasn't, there wasn't a single word of English spoken the entire time. Everything from, you know, introducing the speakers who all spoke in Latin and I guess one of the, two of the readings were also in Greek, one was in Sanskrit. I didn't know what it was, but Charlie had told me afterwards. So it was really an interesting evening and they sang all the Christmas carols in Latin. So you kind of got to know how to say the words, sitting there for the hour, that hour that evening, it was, it was really quite fun. After that, which was already late, they went bowling. And that's where it was until like 12:30 in the morning that we finally left and came back to the hotel. Second day was, was full, I don't want to go through everything, but it was going to the Rikers Mansion, the Museum of Illustration, and the kids had some, everybody had some free time in Newport. Then after that, it was to the Biomes, which was, you know, an aquarium-type place to visit and then to see the, to see the, a Christmas Carol at the Trinity Repertory. So that was another full day, starting about 9:00 in the morning and going till 11 o'clock at night. Next day was a little more relaxed. We went to the Toro Synagogue, which is in Newport, it's the oldest synagogue in America. And it was, that was, that was fascinating. We had this, we had someone present that was just amazing, what she knew about, she wasn't Jewish, but the, what she knew about the religion and how, how they, how they came to America and settled in Newport. The kids were all really interested and engaged in this. So I would say that from beginning to end, it was a very culturally, culturally enriched and immersed trip and I think it, you know, met the mark in terms of what Charlie tries to talk about in terms of cultural diversity and just everything about the trip was wonderful. I recommended it, you have students that are getting ready to go to Lakona at some point, we still have it, go on that trip, it's well worth it if you want to be a chaperone. So that's all I had.
I just want to say that this month Craneville had their Adopt a Family Drive and also currently is still going on the canned food drive. And I think it's really great, especially this time of year, to help kids understand about giving back to others in their community and supporting each other, that not everybody is as fortunate as they may be. And especially with the Adopt a Family this year, one of my kids, all of the child wanted on their ticket was pajamas. So it's really nice to be able to do these events every year so that kids can understand that some kids wants are different and completely basic and what they take for granted and help them understand and appreciate more.
All right, thank you. So the last order of business is to go into executive session and adjourn for executive session. So would you please make a motion?
Be resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee goes into executive session at 8:58 PM in accordance with MGL Chapter 38, Section 21A3 to discuss strategy in preparation for negotiations with a CBA unit for which the chair has declared an executive session is necessary to protect the bargaining position of the committee and to not reconvene in open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to go into executive session. How would the superintendent please take a roll?
Mr. Tomaso?
Here.
Mr. Hinckley? The people are gone. Mr. De Fazio?
Yes, here.
Mr. La Catell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ledizori?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Amorcas?
Yes.
Okay, we'll now go into executive session.